You are here tonight and would like to speak to council. Please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate items. Please indicate item I or matter regarding remain to city council. If the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. Light system, just three minutes. After stating name and address, a green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. After three minutes, the red light will appear. And we have to be table seat. Written remarks can also be handshakes. City clerk can be made part of the record. City code identifies the procedure for participation regarding item on tonight's city council agenda. Provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to matters that the city council by laws and power to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you or business organization to include campaign information. Copies of the ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of the ordinance. At this time, you guys should please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Tina Mooski, who trained in different school, provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Long will use the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of the council members to scan for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Those who wish to stand are welcome, but are no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Let us pray. Holy One, our Creator, our Spirit, our Guide, our Protector. We thank you for this gathering of your beloved children this night, for the gifts, insights, and talents that they each bring to this gathering. We pray your presence with them tonight as they discuss the order of business before them, that they may be guided by your wisdom and strength for the work that lies ahead. We thank you for our Mayor Philip. We pray that you may guide him in his leadership. Give him strength for the days ahead, that he may be encouraged by your love, that he may feel your abiding presence with him as he guides our city forward. We thank you tonight for our city, for its various neighborhoods, for all of the ways that your presence is known and felt amongst our people. We know that there are places within our city that need healing, that need your grace. We pray that you would help guide us in ways that will best serve your children here in Newport News. May your grace, your love, your patience, your peace which passes all understanding abide in these chambers tonight. Dwell with those gathered that as they work for this city, they do all things through your guiding light, that love may be known, care may be shown, and hope may be our strength. We pray all these things through your holy name. Amen.
If you follow me in saying the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilman Woodbury from this meeting?
Go move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick? Four. Motion carried.
Six zero. Thank you. Public hearings, page four. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing change of zoning application number Zulu dash two zero two three dash zero 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 one to Phillips Housing and Development LLC from C1 retail commercial to R4 single-family dwelling for a zero point twelve acre property located at two five zero five Roanoke Avenue. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick? Four. Motion carries. Six zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Page seventeen. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number Charlie Uniform dash two zero two three dash zero 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 nine to First Baptist Church Morrison to allow for the operation of a childcare center in a 12,500 square foot area of the facility on a seven point five one acre parcel located at one two seven two zero Patrick Henry Drive, Zone 01 Office. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I do have a question, but it would be a public question.
Okay.
There really, I just questioned about the childcare. I'm kind of confused on this statement on number one, will the childcare center be closed when schools are closed for the day like a school holiday, a teacher holiday, or spring break?
Colley, so let me, let me close the public hearing and then we'll give you the discussion. How about that?
Right.
All right, so I'll get, I'll say it again. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Do we need to?
Just second and then we'll do the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, so move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Councilman Long?
Yeah, so the first, one of the statements in here is that the school, when the school will be closed, the childcare center will be closed as well. I want to make sure I'm understanding if they're going to be open like during a school teacher holiday, because that would be the day you really need childcare, not, not just only before and after school. They're just closed. I mean, I can't answer that.
You could, if the pastor's here, he could, if you wouldn't mind coming up to speak to it, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, Councilman, Councilwoman. Great question, great question. It has always been our desire to have the facility open during school as well as non-school days. The issue arose because our hands were tied by planning department all surrounding a playground in which their response to us that we needed a playground was required, required by Department of Education. We have since learned that it was not, it's not a requirement for Department of Education. So what has happened, we pretty much acquiesced to it just to kind of move forward with this, but we really desire for, excuse me, to be open during non-school days as well.
All right. So when we vote on it, will?
Council can amend the conditions, but you would need a substitute amendment?
I guess I might be confused on what was the?
You could ask the planning staff who are present why they?
Good afternoon, or evening, sorry. So the, there is a condition in the conditional use permit that does state that they have to maintain a license or get an exemption from the Department of Education. It is our understanding from the Department of Education that while they may have a religious exemption, they still need to provide outdoor recreation space if they're doing all-day childcare. So that's where that condition, and that's when the church decided they were not going to stay open when the school, it was just going to be before and after school care and not during the day, if that helps.
Okay.
But if they want to amend that, then they can do so, but they will have to meet the requirements of the Department of Education.
Okay, all right.
One sec. So Councilman Long, do you want to delay this, to modify?
No, I don't, I don't want to delay it at all. I was just trying to, I was asking the question about, I wasn't clear on that, that piece of it about, if we amended the motion, could I amend the motion? And if they, if the Department of Education says they can't do it, then?
To say that, that they would be open during the day or during the day on Monday through Friday, and then if, if they don't meet the licensing requirement, they still?
They can't do it.
They still don't feel?
Sir?
Let's be clear. There is a difference between licensing and then religious exemption. Under the religious exemption regulation, there is no call for a playground. There's not there, it's not there.
You just have to meet whatever requirement.
Yeah.
There are no requirements for a playground for religious exemption. We have gotten confirmation from Department of Education.
I got you, so I'm gonna, I got it. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna take, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. So is there any further discussion? And I think right now the question is, if we want to amend, we can delay it, or we can pass the motion as written now. Those are two options.
You could pass the motion as now, or the council member who made the motion could rescind the motion.
Okay.
And then a substitute motion could be made that would amend condition three, to just allow it to operate Monday through Friday without putting the time limits in.
Well, the six to nine, well, it's still six to six or whatever the time period is set.
From six AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. Okay? So?
Is that, well, would that be the pleasure of the childcare? I don't want to amend anything, and that's not.
Yeah, let's hear from the pastor. Yeah, let's hear from the pastor.
So, so our desire is to, again, on a regular basis, is during after school, before school, but then when school is not in, it'll be a full day.
Okay, got you.
Okay, all right. All right, so I would like to rescind, because I did the motion, and make a motion to change that number three to Monday through Friday, six to six.
That could be done.
Wait, Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
Six AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, instead of the time limits that are on there. That would be a substitute motion.
Okay.
And that's what wishes of the session?
Okay, there's a motion on the table.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Thank you. Page forty-four. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to take action to sell certain surplus city-owned real estate property and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents, including deeds necessary to effectuate the conveyances. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Only thing I want to ask, and just really explain the process of how the lots will be developed into single-family lots.
Yes, I'd like to ask Acting Assistant City Manager Owen Miller to come forward. And Owen has really been sort of leading this discussion. It, it is a discussion that the administration has really pursued over several years as we look comprehensively at strategies to increase homeownership. And I think he is probably in the better position to, to respond directly to your question.
Thanks. Good evening, City Council. So this is actually, I think it's about the third time over the course of the last two years that we've come, come to you to, to authorize sale of a number of surplus city properties. These are all suitable, build-by-right properties. They, this is, as Alan indicated, as the city manager indicated, this is in furtherance of our goal to create single-family home ownerships. The, the intent is, both with some of the developers that have already reached out to us about these lots, as well as additional developers that we think are out there, is to build single-family owner-occupied homes. We've had success so far, and we're really looking to continue this. They are sold at, generally at market rate, and it seems to have been pretty successful so far. The properties also include design requirements, and so there are minimum design requirements that are required for this. The developers that end up bidding on or purchasing these homes, or the, excuse me, these lots, are aware of that in advance. There is a planning department approval required on any designs as well. And then there's a, the ability for the city to actually repurchase the lots if they're not built on or made suitable progress within a two-year period as well. So we're looking for, I think, approval to move forward with currently eleven lots, eleven parcels, which will eventually be sold for ten buildable lots, I believe. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there any further discussion from council? Hearing no discussion, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Thank you. Page forty-eight. Item E4 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the City of Newport News and Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC for an easement across city-owned property located at 1001 Baptist Road in York County. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page fifty-seven, minutes of the work session of November fourteenth, 2023. Page ninety-eight, minutes of the regular meeting of November fourteenth, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Item F1 and F2, all inclusive?
So move.
Still need a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Thank you. Other city council actions, next on our agenda, page one eighteen. Item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute Addendum Seven to the agreement of lease by and between the Economic Development Authority of the City of Newport News, Virginia, and the City of Newport News, Virginia for the Department of Human Services to lease office space in Rouse Tower. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Thank you. Page one twenty-six. Item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of lease by and between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of General Services for the Virginia Department of Health, Peninsula Health District, which will occupy space at eight three six J. Clyde Morris Boulevard, and I recommend adoption.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Go move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Thank you. Appropriations. Page one ninety-six. Appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
We have four appropriations this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $157,500 in state grant funds to provide a one-time recognition and retention for Newport News Police 911 dispatchers. The second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $200,000 of fiscal year 2024 Federal Highway Administration Safe Streets for all grant program plan funds and $50,000 local match funds for fiscal year 2024 Citywide Safety Action Plan. The third appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1 million from the fiscal year 2022 Bond Authorization Community Development Category and $2 million from the fiscal year 2023 Bond Authorization Community Development Category in support of economic development projects. And the fourth appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $4,745,439 of fiscal year 2024 Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Grant Program and $5,48,301 of local project funds for six, for six projects. I recommend approval of all the appropriations this evening.
Thank you. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve items H1 through H4, all-inclusive?
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethel?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Motion carries. Six zero.
Thank you. Item I, citizen comments on matters germane to city council. I will call each name in the order that it appears in front of me. Ephraim Ragusa? Good to see you again.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Start. All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. So the City of Newport News has released a survey about changing parking regulation and zoning ordinance. To everyone in this forum, if you have not done so, please fill it out since it's ending on Sunday this week. So for all the audience here, the City of Newport News has an extensive, extensive, and very specific rules and requirements regarding off-street parking. To name a few, manufactured homes, beds and breakfasts, hotels, bingo halls, miniature golf courses, furniture stores, propane stores, shooting range, and animal shelters, and that's just a little slice. And probably the most egregious, and I quote, restaurant, cafeteria, or other eating or drinking establishment, one parking space for every 100 square feet of total floor area, including kitchen, end quote. To give you all example, the restaurant Kismet in the Hilton neighborhood is about 2,400 square feet. If we follow these parking minimum requirements to the letter, one parking space for every 100 square feet, the owner of this restaurant has to purchase three or four surrounding properties, demolish those houses and buildings in those property, and pave with a parking lot to accommodate 24 parking spaces. That is insane. All right, so who made these rules? Because there are absolutely no scientific or economic basis on these requirements, none. Behind all these fancy equations underpinning these parking minimum mandates, it has no foundation behind it. But why is it on the books? But I can tell you all what the results are of this parking minimum mandates. Lots of empty, ugly, soul-sucking parking lots that does not generate any economy to Newport News. There are so much parking that I can pick a random parking lot and do donuts in the middle of a weekday. So, Mr. Mayor, I vividly remember you mentioning about quality of life as underlying your decisions. And for me, my measure of quality of life is if residents, seniors, and retirees, kids can walk, skate, bike, and play on the streets of Newport News without fear of getting run over by a vehicle, that should be our ultimate goal. over by a vehicle, that should be our ultimate goal. So would getting rid of parking minimum mandates solve this issue? Well, it's a huge, but it's a foundational first step. So let's be the third city in the Commonwealth of Virginia and the first in Hampton Roads to get rid of this parking minimum mandate citywide. Go all the way instead of a half-heartedly like Norfolk. So I'm pleading you, Mr. Mayor, uh, the city council members, uh, to use your power, your privilege, influence, courage, and forward-thinking to get rid of this parking minimum mandate like yesterday.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and I think, I, I want to give a shout-out to Councilman Long. I know you've been spearheading this, but, um, the, the, the ideal and the intent is to reduce parking minimums throughout the city. Uh, how we go about that is the question, but I think everyone on council agrees. I'm a public policy wonk. Everyone understands reducing, um, parking minimums is good for Newport News. We're tracking. Thank you, sir. Uh, next up, we have, uh, Chris Fryman. You can start, yeah?
All right, Mr. Mayor, city council. I've been up here before. Um, I'm up here now. I've got two things I wanted to cover. The first one is the EMS billing that we get. So if I call nine-one-one, uh, your, your great dispatchers will send an emergency squad to me. Um, if I have to go to the hospital, I'll receive a six hundred dollar or plus bill. Uh, that is then, um, my insurance is then processed, and then I'll see a remainder on it. Now, I'm on, on Tricare, and you're not Tricare Network. So there's an offset of monies that you're not being able to recruit by not being in network with Tricare. I think it's about twenty-five dollars a call. But what, what wasn't on my billing from our billing company is a, what's called a transportation waiver fee. So if you make two hundred percent above the poverty level for your household number, and this is for the citizens, basically, to help save money for the holidays, um, you can get that, or it was, at least back in March, you could have that remainder or the whole thing, if you're not on insurance, waived off the, um, or waived. So maybe we can get more communication out to the community on that. Um, the other part I'm here about is to see if we can get an, an addendum to, uh, city ordinance twenty-six dash nine point two, and that has to do with school buses, uh, the, the camera systems that we have that give the citations. Now, I've seen information recently that shows that some of the hotspot areas are still the hotspot areas. And there is a specific thing within the CDL when our bus drivers are driving that they have to adhere to, and, and they do an outstanding job, but I also understand we're short on drivers, so it's hard. But I recently came across a video that shows a bus come to a stop, deployed stop arm as a, as a vehicle was in line with its bumper, and that citation was signed off on. Um, there's thousands of these that go out a month. Uh, the part on the CDL I'm, I'm talking about is section ten point two point one, and it says, um, "The bus is to activate alternating red lights when traffic is a safe distance from the school bus and ensure stop arm is extended." Now, that tells me that the bus driver should be looking to make sure that the traffic is free and clear before deploying the arm. Um, if you do get hit one of these citations, it's not just fight a civil penalty, it's go to traffic court, put points on your license that could, like, you're risking points on your license, ninety-dollar court cost, and potentially your insurance being notified. So it's, it's more, it's more of a ha, less of a hassle to just pay it off than to try to contest it or fight it. So, um, again, there, there are sections in the road, there's even a, a law, it's, uh, forty-six point two dash nine seventeen that says if a road is five lanes and the center lane is dedicated, that the school has no children crossing that road, or it's a class-one misdemeanor to the school or the bus driver. But people are still expected to stop in those circumstances. It's on the north end of Jefferson, so, all right? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I comment while you're here on that issue, Mr. Mayor? Um, uh, yeah, because the other thing I have to say about that last issue you talked about, about the camera, and I know definitely is for safety and, uh, of course for our children and bus drivers, but I think really looking at that, um, what I've gotten complaints about are people, but by the time you get, like, with a regular ticket, you actually are stopped, and you, you're on the scene, you can get a ticket by a police, you, you know what's going on. By the time people are getting them in the mail, it's maybe like a week or two after the alleged infraction. So it's, you know, they, you can go look at it on camera, but it's still, um, I've had some complaints about that.
May, may I?
Yes, you can respond.
Okay, the, 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 the issue that I, I at least, I can't, I don't have the money to fight it legislatively on the high end. I'm finding that out. But the issue that I'm seeing right now is, um, the videos are still edited to a point. You can't go back ten seconds, or that, or at least when I got mine two years ago, I couldn't do that. I don't know if they changed it or not. But it, ultimately, when they, when they passed the law for the citation part, it's like the state said, "We expect you to put eighteen eggs in a twelve-eck carton." And if you break an egg, you get a citation. It has to do with parameters of reaction perception, or perception-reaction and stopping distances. Those are kind of ignored when, when, um, you're within a certain proximity of the bus.
Yes. Thank you.
Sorry. No, it's perfect. Thank you for coming out. We have, it's, I think it's, uh, Freepa Liston?
Thank you, Mayor Jones and city council members, for providing me with this opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I've been a resident of Hampton Roads for the majority of my life. I'm sickened by the ongoing genocide against the people of Gaza. Over fourteen thousand innocent men, women, children, and babies have been murdered by the Israeli Defense Forces over the last fifty-two days using American weapons and billions of taxpayer money, billions of dollars in taxpayer money. Virginia itself gives a huge amount to Israel every year. It is an absolute abomination that our tax dollars are being used to aid in the killing of innocent Palestinians, when at the same time, at a local level, the percentage of food insecurity for K through twelve students is over nineteen point eight percent. Newport News Public Schools are unable to accommodate teacher salaries that offset the current inflation rate, and there's a homeless population on the streets of Newport News just outside this building. I demand that the Newport News City Council pass a resolution calling for an immediate, permanent ceasefire in Gaza, support U.S. Congress Resolution seven eight six, and put an end to all trading partnerships with the Israeli military and police, and that a resolution be passed affirming the value and dignity of Palestinian lives. Enough is enough. The residents of Newport News demand a ceasefire and a free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, I think, Mr. Clayton Ty.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of council. My name is Clayton Ty. I reside at one-two-seven-three-three, San Pepel Circle. I am appealing council to lobby our congressional representatives for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. I believe violence begets violence. This isn't a new concept. In fact, it's a very simple one, and has been the principle of Islam, Judaism, and Christianity for thousands of years. Thou shall not kill. It's not selective, nor is it open to interpretation. It means what it says. Unfortunately, this siege has morphed into cruel indifference and collective punishment for the sake of revenge. The disproportionate use of force against the Palestinian people is completely out of hand, and is enough to make a combat veteran like myself sick to my stomach. Nearly fifteen thousand people have been killed in over fifty days, over half of them being women and children. Around fifty thousand tons of bombs provided by the U.S. government have been dropped indiscriminately since October seventh. This is the equivalent of three of the bombs dropped on Hiroshima. In response, international organizations such as the U.N. and W.H.O. have demanded a ceasefire. Human rights groups and millions of people around the world are doing the same. The International Criminal Court is accepting accusations levied against IDF for war crimes. Yet our administration and congressional representatives act deaf, dumb, and blind when ignoring pleas from these organizations and from its very constituents. They have buried their heads in the sand while authorizing bills sending even more weapons. It says, "If the people are ignored for a while, they'll just go away." Well, I'm here. People who oppose this war have no other recourse, so we have to appeal to you, our local leaders. It's the holidays, and we're supposed to be practicing peace, love, and joy. Let's start by extending the same courtesy to everyone, not just the chosen few. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll, I'll actually just take a moment of, of mayor privilege to, to speak. So, um, I know there are things that happen at the international level, and people might say why it's important. I think it's important that our local, uh, leaders address this. So we, we're actually, I wasn't going to mention this, but, um, a few hours ago, they're putting together a delegation of local leaders that they're going to, uh, to send, I think, to Ramallah, I think to parts of Israel. I, I will be a part of that, I think, in January. Um, I do think it's important that we bear witness and we take a look at things. So, um, I know it's an international thing, but, um, I, I plan, uh, if everything, you know, we make it work, I'll plan to, to be over there, uh, in a few mon, in a few weeks. Uh, next, new business. Our next item is new business, uh, Mr. Manager.
Nothing to report this evening, sir.
Thank you. City attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City clerk? Councilman Long?
Uh, thank you for everyone to come out and speak tonight on many issues that are in the city. I also want to, um, thank, uh, Thrive. It was an article in the newspaper this past week, they were able to open their, uh, free grocery store, and that's on, uh, Nettles, um, along with Thrive. Thrive is a great organization. I actually had the opportunity to go over there to their facility before they, uh, finished construction of it, and they have a lot of areas set up, uh, offer financial assistance, uh, financial coaching. So I think Thrive is a great organization. Um, and the, the free grocery part is for the clients that do come into Thrive. So I would encourage anyone, um, if you knew a person in need, to reach out to thrivepennsylvania.org to get some more information on that. Um, I should have made this comment during the appropriation section. That was when H one, when we did the recognition for our dispatcher. Um, I, it's great that we were able to give a one-time, uh, bonus to our dispatches, police officers, dispatchers, uh, but I would like that, you know, when we're looking at the budget coming up, that we're actually looking at making sure our dispatchers are gonna be, um, paid at a level comparable to other cities with the same service calls. But I think it was great that we were able to get the state funds to, um, give a one-time bonus to our dispatchers and the police department. Um, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, Councilmember Long, thank you for, uh, bringing to our attention the vital role that our nine-one-one dispatchers, um, play. Uh, it's a very, uh, uh, critical and pivotal role, and it is, as we know, a very, uh, high-stress role on top of that, uh, as many of our public, um, responders face every single day. But I am happy to announce that we recently, uh, adjusted, uh, the salary for our dispatchers. Uh, I, I, I think it, it was, um, an action that was, was, was needed, and, um, I think now they are appropriately compensated, um, but there's always room, um, uh, for, for all of our, our salaries in the future, so we'll keep your comments, uh, in mind.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vick?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Neely?
No comments, sir.
Councilman Harris?
Uh, yes, uh, I also want to thank everyone for coming out on tonight as well. I just want to publicly thank, uh, Chief Drew and Lieutenant Webster, not Colonel Webster, uh, for sharing yesterday at our councilman's corner that we had over at Denby Community Center, where we're trying to have it last month, some things came up, uh, but we were able to get back to it, and we'll be having these periodically throughout the course of the year. Uh, our next one will be in January, and I'll get the date out once we get all the information together.